Good day, who? It's gonna be late. Hey, your mic's live. Yes, it is. I'd like to call this council meeting. Would you please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance? Ms. Tessa, would you lead us in the pledge, please? Pledge, lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent meditation or prayer. Thank you. Melody, would you do a roll call, please?
Councilman Holt.
Present.
Councilman Curry.
Here.
Councilwoman King.
Here.
Councilwoman Michler.
Present.
Councilman Fish.
Here.
Councilwoman Hines.
Here.
Councilman Crabtree.
Here.
Councilman Hinky. President Dawson.
Present. I'd like to remind everyone about their cell phones. Make sure they're in silent mode or airplane mode. This time, can I get motions for minutes for approval for September eighth, twenty twenty five meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Fish, second for Mr. Crabtree. All those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Now, these mics are different than what we're used to, so do we need to speak directly into them or just do what we've been doing? And could every... No, but I just want to make sure that can everybody hear? Because up here, we kind of, it gets a little... So, yes, like, we don't know that you can hear. You can hear, though. Okay, all right. That's the important part. All right. Unfinished business. Any presentations, reports for the mayor? Nothing? Or this is a first reading? Second and third reading, I'm sorry. Would you please read proposed ordinance twenty-five dash oh, there's twenty-eight by title, please?
Proposed ordinance twenty-five dash oh dash twenty-eight. An ordinance authorizing the city of Elkhart, Indiana to fund its taxable economic development revenue notes, series twenty twenty-five, and approving and authorizing other actions in respect there, too.
Thank you. Got a motion, second, to adopt this ordinance on second reading?
So moved.
And motion for Mr. Crabtree, something about Mr. Fish. Mr. Huber.
Good evening, council. Mike Huber, Director of Development Services at the city of Elkhart. I'd like to start the presentation this evening with a quote. This quote's from the River District Plan, which was originally developed and adopted under the Nice administration. I think some council members here tonight were part of that process as well. It states, "Elkhart's community growth vision starts with developing a thriving urban, mixed-use, walkable community that is a downtown destination emphasizing the rivers and recreational amenities." I think that's a, I think that's a fair synopsis, not just for the River District, but I think it's a, it's a vision that has been affirmed as we've continued planning across multiple administrations with significant public support in things, in additional plans like the Benham Neighborhood Plan and the Downtown Master Plan. The River District itself is an example of success that can be achieved through public-private partnership model framed around a shared community vision, catalyst, anchor, quality-of-place projects, and combined public philanthropic and private investments. We often hear about triple Ps, public-private partnerships. I think in Elkhart, we extend that to the quadruple P. I mean, we have the philanth, we have a very strong philanthropic component to our, our triple Ps. The River District Implementation Plan is the shared community vision that was developed in a process that did include broad community participation, city staff input, and participation from the philanthropic stakeholders as well. The River District Implementation Team facilitated many of the early activities and included stakeholders and members from all three sectors. The River District Implementation Plan supports that mixed-use, walkable destination vision, outlines a goal of attracting a thousand-plus housing units, which was then supported by the Zimmerman-Volk Housing Need Study that was, that was completed by the, by the city's planning and economic development departments, as well as office and retail developments and park and recreation amenities that support the River District and downtown as a whole, as a destination, along with providing adequate parking to support the new development and the success and the growth of the Aquatic Center. When we talk about catalyst, anchor projects, there's not a better example in the city of this than the Aquatic Center. That represents a sixty-five million dollar project as a lead investment in the River District. It's a top-five facility in the country of its kind. And, and, you know, own, ownership, stakeholder, and project investors include Beacon Health, the Elkhart Community Schools, the College, and the Community Foundation of Elkhart County, in addition to the many local philanthropists who donated specifically to that project. Through these investments, through this shared visioning, we have seen the results of... It's not like we're betting on it to come in the future. We are seeing and continue to see the results. In the last ten years, including the new Zone One development that's being constructed right now, we've seen over five hundred new residential units being built and over seven hundred new residents being attracted to the neighborhood and to the city of Elkhart. Our research into the, into those numbers indicate that thirty percent of those residents plus are new to the city. They have an average age of about thirty and incomes over a hundred thousand dollars. So they are, you know, in addition to that, that's only thirty percent, they are also being a destination for folks from within the community who are looking for that high amenity, high lifestyle, urban, walkable lifestyle. Additionally, we have forty businesses in the River District, twelve restaurants, and Beacon Health is exceeding its membership goals and performance for the, for the Fitness Center. They have over six thousand members and generate fifteen hundred visits to the facility every day. From an economic standpoint, we've seen a total of over two hundred and fifty million dollars, over a quarter of a billion dollars of investment in the River District. The Aquatic Center in twenty twenty-four facilitated multiple events and generated over six million dollars in new visitor spending-driven economic impact and over thirty-nine thousand hotel room nights in our downtown and hospitality corridor. In the, in the last five years, this is important as we look ahead to some of the impacts of SCA One. Total assessed value of property in the River District has nearly doubled from three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars an acre to over seven hundred and five thousand dollars an acre. Part of the reality of that, that increase in, in AV per acre is based on our ability to create density in the neighborhood. It is density of the development that drives that per, per acre value of AV growth. An oversupply of off-street surface parking is the enemy of increasing density. We have been working closely with all of the property owners and the developers in the River District and the Delta Neighborhood, and specifically the Elkhart Aquatics team, to ensure a proper balance of parking supply and demand. Our desired outcome is to develop a district-wide approach to managing the fluctuations of demand, but not overbuilding around peak demand periods, at the same time ensuring parking limitations don't negatively impact the experiences in the district, including the Aquatic Center users and event attendees. The Aquatic Center has mentioned to us multiple times that as they get feedback on events from the participants and attendees, their number-one complaint is, is always mentioning parking. Currently, the daily peak use demand of the parking lots, and this is just the daily use demand, not the, the events. At the aquatics facility, the River Bend and the East Bank Buildings use about eighty percent of the available off-street, non-street parking. Large and major events increase the stress on the existing supply as well. A comprehensive parking approach is critical for us to continue to grow the impact of the events hosted at the Aquatic Center while also maintaining the positive momentum of development in the River District neighborhood. That continued development is moving into Zones Two and Zones Three. The project associated with the loan ordinance is being presented tonight. Are part of, we impact their development in the Delta Neighborhood and is the lead project for Zone Two and Zone Three development. Zones Two and Three include redevelopment commission-owned property on the south side of Jackson Boulevard, on both sides of Elkhart Avenue. The developer plans for an additional mixed, for, for future additional mixed-use development that includes approximately two hundred and eighty additional residential units and sixty thousand square feet of commercial space. The developer has awarded over nine million dollars of Ready 2.0 funds from the state of Indiana to continue this development in the Delta Neighborhood. A component of the Ready 2.0 eligibility is a local public commitment matching the Ready 2.0 investment. As a result, the city and the developer have been working in partnership for the last year to create a framework of partnership to maximize the state's nine million dollar investment, starting with the, with the project at two twenty-five East Jackson. This lead project is proposed for a one-point-three-acre site. The developer is proposing to acquire and redevelop the site in partnership with the city to create a new thirty-eight million dollar mixed-use development wrapped around a two-hundred-space public parking garage. The project will include seventy new residential units and approximately twelve thousand square feet of office and retail commercial space. The partnership approach with the developer on this project allows the city to leverage an eight million dollar investment in public infrastructure project, which is the parking structure, with a thirty million dollar investment by the developer for the wraparound mixed-use project. This maximizes our ability to really create impact in the community. Initial estimates of the post-construction net AV associated with the private mixed-use portion of the project indicate that will create over ten million dollars of new AV just in the one-acre site. The loan ordinance before you this evening represents the city's proposed approach for its partnership with the developer on this project. Given the impact of the Aquatic Center and the River District as economic drivers for both the downtown and the Cassopolis Street Quarter hospitality businesses, the city is proposing to leverage funds from the Cassopolis Street TIF in the form of a forgivable loan in the amount of eight million dollars to the developer to fund the construction of the parking project. Upon completion of the construction of the garage, the developer will deed the garage back to the city of Elkhart to be included as a part of the city's public parking inventory within the River District, including our on-street and surface-off-street inventory. Currently, the Cassopolis Street TIF has an unencumbered balance of over eleven million dollars, which has been largely driven by the growth in the corridor of hotels, restaurants, and retail developments. But these funds are, are limited to be expended on activities that provide economic benefit to those business and property owners within, within the TIF. The use of cash will eliminate costs associated with any bonding or financing debt by eliminating upfront borrowing costs and interest costs. Additionally, municipal, typical municipal debt strategies use twenty-year financing terms, and the Cassopolis Street TIF will expire by twenty thirty-seven. The Cassopolis Street TIF also generates annually about four-and-a-half million dollars of new revenue. Finally, the city will retain future TIF recreated by this two-twenty-five Jackson project, which is estimated to accrue to a total of five-point-seven million dollars, which can be utilized to offset future capital obligations or fund other improvements in the River District, Delta Neighborhood. At its September ninth meeting, the Elkhart Redevelopment Commission approved the Economic Development Agreement with the River District Development Corporation and authorized the use of the Cassopolis Street TIF to fund the loan. Additionally, the Economic Development Commission acted earlier this afternoon to approve the project and the loan financing under the state's EDC statute recommending the council to fund and approve the loan. I handed some documents out to you earlier. Those were the actions that were taken by the EDC earlier today. While the city and, and the developer have reached agreement on the terms of the Economic Development Agreement, we are finalizing terms for two separate agreements that will be approved by the city's legal counsel for the Board of Works. These agreements include the final parking easement that defines the terms for access and use of the garage by users of the developer's mixed-use project and a final parking garage management agreement specifying the terms for garage maintenance and parking management activities. We anticipate that these will be completed within the next seven days. No funds will be dispersed from the loan until these agreements have been approved. The developer is also present this evening and available to provide additional details about the project components and timeline, and I'm available for questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Michler. Let the record indicate that Mr. Hinky has joined us. Mr. Michler.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions here, Mike. So, the, you, did you say sixty or seventy apartments?
The seventy apartments are planned.
Okay, because the minutes from redevelopment said sixty, so I just wanted to clarify.
The current project contemplates seventy.
Seventy, okay. Are those one-bedroom or two-bedroom?
I, I think it's a mix of Studio One and Two.
Okay. The reason I ask is the folks who are living there, I assume, would also have at least the minimum of one parking spot to themselves.
So the city's current planning approach to parking is to leverage the new, the two hundred spaces provided here with a hundred and eighty that we have off-surface across the street and ninety to a hundred spaces that we have on-street to create an inventory. We'll have about an inventory of a thousand spaces in the River District. Our intent is to have all of that be free, public parking. We will limit it to overnight parking is for resident parking only. So residents who are residents in any of the, in any of the residential downtown in the River District can park in any of those spaces.
Okay, so...
There are no dedicated spaces for, for building, for building residents.
Even in the wraparound?
In any of them. No, the correct.
Okay. Because I was going to say that would... The average spot, I think, cost for a parking space in a garage is around twenty-five to thirty thousand. My, my concern there was if people living there had a dedicated spot, then the city would essentially be paying seventy-five thousand dollars for a parking space. But you're saying it's to use for everyone there?
That's a great question. Our intent is to try, again, the balanced parking approach that leverages, you know, demand, office daytime user demand and nighttime resident user demand in, in managing the eight hundred-plus spaces of inventory, public inventory that we have. Additionally, developers have to still meet the onsite per-development parking program requirements of the zoning ordinance. So, so that's the balanced, comprehensive parking management project.
So for the commercial spaces that will be in there as well during the day, we'll utilize those?
Correct.
Okay. As well as the residents who are there, they have the right to, to park there throughout the day?
Throughout the day, yes. It's first come, first served, correct.
Okay. And the, the net AV, is that based off the current structure or is that factoring in SCA One's future changes to assessment?
That factors in SCA One as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Hinky.
Mike, if I could just go down a listing and, and you can just say yes, whatever the case may be. But this is a project of thirty-eight million?
This is a thirty-eight million-dollar project, yes.
Okay, thirty-eight million. Seventy apartments, as was outlined.
Correct.
And then specific parking to this by land use. And we talked about the density of that land use and available parking. The parking is adequate to cover itself.
Yes. The required parking for the development would roughly be about a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty spaces.
So, I'm just going to, just for my way of thinking, personal funds utilized by the investor in this project, of the thirty-eight million, how much is out of pocket by investors?
Between the investor and their... So, I would defer, Dave's here as well. But they, you know, they have ready funds that they're putting into this. I think they're putting about five million of ready.
Yeah, I'm looking at personal funds outside of state incentives, outside of federal incentives, outside of forgivable loans. And the reason we are here, because we're walking right into our budget considerations. I mean, the dollars left in the coffers of the city have a greater value today than yesterday and the day before and six months ago. And because there's less of it. And there's less coming down the pike. So every dollar has to have some form of a return, be it monetary or something that brings a monetary return. So that's why I wanted to break this down a bit.
Sure, sure. So, so the answer to your question, Councilman, is we're putting eight million in for the construction of the garage. We're investing in the public asset, the public amenity, the infrastructure component. I believe the remaining thirty, the developer has about five million from state dollars going into this, and he's bringing the other twenty-five. And that's the portion that will generate the ten-plus million dollars new net AV.
So, so would you then directly say that the eight million of city funds are parking?
I would, I would, I would absolutely characterize our investment as in building the asset that we will own at the end of the project.
Now, I'm told in conversations in the past that if the private sector builds the parking garage, it is much less costly than if a municipality builds that same garage.
That's correct. That's why the, that's why we're providing the funds in the form we are, so that we can take advantage of them constructing it and deeding it back to the city.
So while the city is looking at this venture, and I'm not... I'm not there yet, but trying to look at it financially, what does it do for people? We have parking and parking needs, and we have dedicated a certain amount of money towards these and these, and future investment in the form of capital improvements. Hopefully, that bring back that amount of money. What is the break even, then, for taxpayers? How many years out does it take to recover eight million directly associated with this particular project in and of itself?
So, from a financial standpoint, again, we, we create eleven million dollars worth of new AV. The, the economic impact of bringing an additional hundred and ten residents into the, into the downtown, thirty percent of those from outside the area, those are significant new capital dollars that, that generate new sales tax revenue, new restaurant revenue, support small businesses. All of those things go into strengthening our, our city and our downtown economy.
So the eight million-dollar parking garage provides us a hundred and how many spaces?
Two hundred spaces.
Two hundred spaces. Okay. And then finally, why wouldn't we then have a third party either manage it? Charge for the space? Why wouldn't we? And what would it give us back as far as future maintenance costs?
So, the, the future maintenance costs, the future capital maintenance costs, we're collecting the future TIF off of the private development to offset those future costs. We are exploring a private maintenance and management agreement with the developer. That's one of those two agreements that I was, that I was referencing earlier. You know, the strategy behind keeping the parking available free is to make sure that, at least in the initial term of, of the development, that we continue to see success and not throw unnecessary barriers in attracting residents, both local and from outside the area, to participate and, and visit and experience downtown, the River District, and the, the Delta Neighborhood.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, eight of eleven million comes directly out of that TIF?
That's correct.
And then future collections of that TIF offset, are there to offset the future cost of the parking garage?
So, so future collections in that TIF should, should pay back the initial eight million-dollar investment during the development timeframe of the project? Additionally, the project will generate, over the length of the new TIF for that project specifically, an additional five-point-seven million dollars that we can use for future capital expenses.
Yeah. I just, it would bother me...
So, so the total is four-and-a-half million in Cassopolis for the next twelve years, and then the project itself will generate a total of five-point-seven million?
That's a better way to look at it. I appreciate that. I didn't want to recycle money and say, okay, we built the thing, it's eight million dollars, and it's going to take future TIF dollars to maintain the property after that ten-year period when the maintenance starts to show. And then we've just consumed our future cash, and we're actually effectively in a losing position. Hopefully, it will facilitate other growth spots of the city, and that's truly what we're after, looking at our financial future. We will need those investments. I think in hindsight, all of us wish that we would have held more dollars in the form of investment, knowing what we know now. But we have to have a way to have a return of value. Otherwise, we're spending future money, and we have no guarantee of it coming back and being able to finance our future here.
I think it's a great point, Councilman Hinky. I think, you know, we're seeing the spinoff of the success as we look at development projects that we're negotiating with that are also state-ready, legally funded in, in the, in the near downtown, crouching into the Benham Neighborhood. We also know that there are, there are multiple developers who are interested in redevelopment activities as we look at the County Courthouse block. So, so recognizing the importance of continuing to balance the right investments to keep that momentum going and not necessarily taking an, an approach of saying, we can't put anything out and, and potentially slowing or losing... out and, and potentially slowing or losing the momentum and the growth opportunities that we have.
Initially, in the River District, uh, conversations, um, and I, I appreciated it greatly because of the new concept to me, uh, that they would do a wraparound parking structure. So the outside of that structure would be the apartments and the parking garage or the parking spaces itself would be in the middle part. So it didn't look so much like a parking garage.
That, that's what we're doing here. Dave has a rendering as well. And that's exactly the concept here.
I just wanted to make sure we were going to follow through with the original concept that we haven't deviated from that.
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Michler.
Thank you. Um, you mentioned Beacon. I know that they are, uh, expanding their, uh, parking to include, uh, 76 lots. Was Beacon approached about being a partner in this, um, project at all?
Uh, so I think, you know, Beacon has its own parking, um, private kind of parking arrangement. Um, they, they indicated they needed, uh, additional capacity. We worked with them to provide that. We did have conversations. We factored that in, in the sizing of this parking garage.
But they were not asked to, to be a?
They were. They just chose not to.
Okay. Um, and you, you stated earlier that at full capacity with the businesses and residents there, 120 of those 200 spaces could potentially be occupied?
They, well, so, including the commercial visitors who would not be permitted to park overnight.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and that's the balance to make sure it's used, right? And not empty, but still have capacity within the balanced parking approach.
My, my only concern about not having residents there have some kind of parking pass for the garage is if it's utilized for events. And if they're out at work and it's the 4th of July, they try to get home and they have nowhere within blocks to park. Um, so that's something that I hope could be addressed if we're.
So, so we're, that's, that's part of the number scheme that we've been looking at. And as we continue to add development, we'll continue to find ways to continue to make sure we have, uh, the appropriate space. But we believe that you don't, in those times, you don't have the office users, right? So those cars aren't there. And that's why we're prohibiting parking overnight for event, for event attendees and things like that, so that the residents, at the end of the day, do have an opportunity to come in and use the garage.
Thank you. My only other concern is, you know, I, I brought this up earlier. We know that we have the impact of SEA1 coming and we know the potential cuts that are going to be impacting our budget. Um, we also know that due to a, a change in the law in 2023, we can utilize TIF funds to provide, uh, funding for public safety. Um, and that's what, what comes first, um, to my mind when it comes to this, is making sure that every aspect of public safety is pro, uh, is funded. The police, fire, dispatch, they have what they need. Um, I think this is a great project and everything, um, you know, we need the parking, we need the wraparound, uh, businesses, and we need the, the residential. The fact that we're already at 500 new residents with 250 million dollars of investment, I think is a, a, a great start. But I am, uh, very concerned, um, because of the impact of SEA1 and how these funds could potentially be used to, to offset that in the future.
I, I think it's a great point, Councilman. I, I would say the fact that we're still generating 4.5 million dollars a year in that same TIF. We are evaluating the future impacts of SEA1, all the TIFs and how we can utilize those funds to help support and make sure those needs are met.
Thank you. Mr. Fish.
Oh, thanks, Mike. Good presentation. But, uh, just a couple of specific questions. Now, we set a precedent back, uh, when River District started, uh, its development and growth. Um, and the, in the, the event of a default, are, is the city still first on clawback?
Uh, so, um, the, the, the development agreement indicate, or includes language, um, that requires completion of the project. Whether it's this developer, whether it's a different developer, the project will get completed.
So, just speculation here, if the first developer doesn't come through, what's to say we can't get a second one to, to pick up the slack and move forward?
The, uh, the, the clauses in the agreement allow us to make sure that we get it completed.
Okay. Yeah. All right. I, I think I'm going to have a couple of questions off, off mic, uh, about that later. Thank you.
Mr. Hinky.
So with that said, um, I appreciate what Mr. Michler said about public safety. And quite frankly, I, I like to reverse that course and say if we make our sound investments, all the rest of it comes automatic because that's the investment return on the dollar that we count on to, to, uh, fund all of our future endeavors, including public safety. That's how I would look at it. Um, personal opinion. Um, the second part about that though is, um, that we, I would ask that the city would come out with a public statement because you have another 8 million dollars, um, of a forgivable loan, and people are going to have to be informed about the return on investment. They can't use the parking garage per se. It's not necessarily for them. There are some leftover spaces if you want to, you know, try to get in there and do, but we are using public funds, uh, by which, um, they don't necessarily participate. So growth is that important, I think. I'm, I'm not a great proponent of TIF. Um, you know, quite honestly, it has an, an ulterior impact, um, with regarding to our schools and our township and our library and those things. So I would just hope that every dollar, uh, in our TIF funds are strictly used for investment, um, on things that actually have a return to give back to where it came from. And that's why I would support this. And I think the caveat to it, um, is that this will support and spawn off yet, uh, next generation of investments that have to happen here in Elkhart.
Was there a question in there for me?
No, Mike. Philosophy on TIF.
That was Dave.
Number one. And then number two, we have to grow our economy.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Thank you. I'll open up for the public, for public hearing. If anyone in the audience who would like to speak with regards to this ordinance, please step forward.
My name is Howard Turner. As for the public parking, having lived near Ricefield when fireworks were there and on-street parking, if I would, wanted to leave my house, to go to the store and come back, I would have, not be able to park in front of my own house. If I lived in the apartments of this new parking garage and I worked third shift, which I did for 20 years, when I come home from work, I may not have a parking place where I live. That would be a concern. I'm in favor of the project, but I think the people who live there should have an assigned parking.
Thank you. So anyone else in audience? Seeing none, we turn it back to the council. Any other further council discussion?
Um, as I, you know, stated previously, I think that this is a, a great project. I think it'll be an asset to the River District. I just don't like the timing and, um, the potential ramifications that we have, uh, from SEA1 on, um, our ability to provide funding in the future. So, uh, once again, I, I think that this is a wonderful project and will benefit the River District. I just think the timing and funding mechanism is, uh, is not there for it.
Mr. Hinky.
So I, I'm sure that there'll be parking considerations and I'm sure it will be fluid as it moves along, knowing, um, and, um, you know, I happen to have a, a place with limited parking at the lake and they assign each condo a parking spot. And then there's a group of visitors across the way, but you get your one spot and that's where you are. Other people don't get to park it there. Same thing with your boat docks. There it is. It's a number. Um, visitors better be on your boat. But it seems as though they would organize that in, in the future because they don't want to have a distraction to those people living there. I just want to make sure it's a wise investment for everyone else in our city, seeing it as a positive and an influence. Um, and they'll space it accordingly. They know more about it than I do. Um, again, I'd like to get on the other side of this thing and look at manageable cost of overhead and upkeep. Once that original money is spent, it's all about the operational overhead thereafter. And that's the part, if we're responsible for it, it would seem as though, um, if the city's going to be responsible for the maintenance of that property as far as the parking garage itself, there's going to have to be a little bit of, uh, equal cash on the table.
Thank you. Melody, would you do a roll call vote on second reading, please?
Councilman Holtz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Curry?
Yes.
Councilwoman King?
Yes.
Councilwoman Michler?
No.
Councilwoman Fish?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines?
Yes.
Councilwoman Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hinky?
President Dawson?
Aye. Starting the final?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hines as her second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Crabtree. Do you read just by title and do a roll call vote, please? Melody?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-28, an ordinance authorizing the city of Elkhart, Indiana to fund its taxable economic development revenue notes, series 2025, and approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto. Councilman Holtz?
Aye.
Councilman Curry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines?
King.
Count, I'm sorry, Councilwoman King?
Yes.
Jumped ahead. Councilman Michler?
No.
Councilwoman Fish?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines?
Yes.
Councilwoman Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hinky?
President Dawson?
Aye.
S H1.
Thank you. Would you reread proposal 25-0-29 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-29, an ordinance of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, adopting the Elkhart contractual protections ordinance to prohibit certain limitations of liability and indemnification clauses in the contract with the city.
So move.
And motion by Mr. Crabtree. Second by Mr. Fish. Counsel discussion?
Hopefully there is a present.
Seeing none. Uh, the presentation. John, did you want to speak to this?
Good evening, counsel. John Esper Corporation, counsel. Proposed ordinance 25-0, or 25-0-29 seeks to address two contractual provisions that have appeared with increasing, um, frequency, to the point where, um, the contractual provisions that is the subject of this ordinance, um, they appear more often, uh, far more often than they do not in, in certain contracts. What, what I'm describing are contractual provisions that seek to limit the liability of the contracting partner, uh, party with the city, or seeking to, uh, indemnify the contracting partner in its relationship with the city. So let me put some, uh, description to that in terms of what it looks like when it shows up in a, in a contractual agreement. Imagine a, a contract in which the city purchases equipment, uh, say for a playground. Uh, and, um, the, uh, equipment, um, is made, is, is, is made, manufactured, uh, wherever and sold to the city, uh, for its, uh, for, for one of its parks. Whether in the installation of the, of the equipment or in the design of the equipment, um, it's defective. And as a result, someone, a child, by way of example, is, is injured. Under a contract that seeks to limit the liability of the other contracting party, the, um, the contract would, um, and, and this is literally how it often appears, is, um, limited to the amount paid by the city under the contract. And if you can imagine, uh, what the damages would look like, uh, to the city, uh, for a piece of equipment installed in its, um, in one of its parks, uh, when, when a child may be, uh, catastrophically injured. Um, the, the injuries, the damages, the losses would be, uh, far, far in excess of what the cost of, um, a piece of equipment might be. What would be prohibited in a contract is a contract that is, is, um, a provision that prohibits using a limitation of liability provision and, um, allowing Indiana law, as it has developed over, uh, the decades and centuries of, uh, Indiana law, to reasonable foreseeable damages, um, when one party or, or the other is, is negligent, whether simple negligence, gross negligence, or in defects of, of design. Simply returns the status quo, not the status quo, returns the standards of contracts and court claims or other causes of action under Indiana law to their natural balance, allowing the established principles of law to determine whether one party is responsible, negligent, um, such that, um, losses should be attributable to that individual or not. Uh, in other ways that those, um, damages might, uh, those contract provisions may appear is in the form of, um, say a software, um, contract where a developer, um, builds a piece of software for the city, say to manage our ambulance billing records and, um, and does so carelessly or negligently, um, resulting in, um, a breach of our system, the exposure of confidential, uh, protected information to the public of, um, of residents or others who have been served by our ambulance services. Uh, a limitation of liability provision in such a contract would limit, uh, often, uh, in that form, could very well limit, uh, the damages to the amounts paid on an annual basis of, of that contract. Um, and, and yet the city may suffer claims against it for, um, arising out of, um, our breached server, uh, servers or the, uh, the public exposure of confidential, uh, protected information. That's the, uh, limitation of liability provision that's addressed here. And once again, it simply says, um, we're returning to what the law has established as what should be, uh, the responsible, uh, the appropriate standards, um, of care for, uh, delivery of software equipment or, um, and what damages may be compensable. Another provision, uh, that's addressed by the, um, Elkhart contractual protections ordinance is a prohibition of an indemnification provision under, uh, under a contract with another party, using the same, um, type of, using the same examples. Um, an indemnification provision would, as it appears often in, in contracts, would, uh, require the city to protect and hold harmless and indemnify. That means stand as a shield to the financial, um, costs that may arise to the company that manufactured the playground equipment, um, which is, um, perhaps, uh, others would see as unconscionable. Just if I, what, what you're, what you're proposing here, if this ordinance is adopted, would be defined that it is in violation of public policy, the public policy of the city of Elkhart. And, um, and making that finding prohibit it, uh, from appearing or being enforceable under any agreements with the city. It addresses, uh, contracts and agree, uh, and agreements, uh, forward-looking. It would not be retroactive to any existing contracts or, um, or even, uh, contracts that, um, have been completed to date. It would only apply to, um, future agreements, future contracts. And, um, that's essentially what's being asked of you, to make a, uh, determination of public policy that, um, that having accountability, uh, in the parties that are contracting with the city and the services that they provide or, um, or goods that they deliver are accountable for, uh, for that work. Um, and, and also transparency in terms of, um, what losses should be compensable under, um, law by the appropriately responsible parties and not having it artificially, um, made unavailable, uh, artificially, uh, removed or shifted to the city.
Mr. Fish?
Thanks, John. Um, a couple of things come to mind. Uh, I appreciate the home rule aspect here. It's nice to talk about home rule for a change. Uh, number one is Uh, number one, is, is anyone going to challenge, any of our suppliers going to challenge a law or an ordinance like this to where they say, hey, you haven't done it in the past, and now all of a sudden, you're putting a burden on us? Will that happen? Is there a possibility of that?
There is a possibility of that. In fact, we, uh, we address it, um, every time we see it in the contracts.
Okay.
And, um, and, and we push back against it. And what has resulted from that is contracts get delayed, um, enormous amounts, and I don't, uh, I'm not exaggerating the part, uh, the point, um, an enormous amount of time is spent, um, pushing back, redrafting, uh, returning to the opposing, to another party to the contract, our objections to certain provisions. They hand it over to their attorneys. Their attorneys attempt to negotiate those terms out. Um, and, um, sometimes we're successful, um, sometimes, uh, I can recall a recent contract with a, um, a international, uh, manufacturer of, of, of equipment that we use. We couldn't even get an audience, um, with their attorney without a contract being in excess of a million dollars to, uh, to hear out our objection to certain indemnification provisions or, um, or limitations of liability provisions. So, um, what you're establishing here is, one, um, what will be the norms for the, for the city of, uh, city of Elkhart? And I can tell you that it may not necessarily get challenged because when I see some of the more sophisticated contracts coming from very, very large companies, uh, they often either precede these provisions or conclude these provisions with a caveat, a reservation. And that reservation or caveat is, uh, is unless otherwise prescribed by law, saying that unless there is a legal prohibition, this clause, this provision is enforceable under this agreement. But recognizing that there may be jurisdictions in which they are doing business that have acted in this matter. In fact, the state of Indiana has, in, um, in a very limited, uh, capacity, the state of Indiana has prohibited such provisions, um, in, um, public works, um, contracts. And in, um, and in those, it, it simply has passed a law that says in public works contracts, whether in the design and build or, uh, in the construction, um, those are, um, prohibited. They're found to be contrary to public policy and are unenforceable if, um, if they appear in a contract, uh, with the state of Indiana. We are not stepping into that, that subject matter that the state has already occupied. We're filling the gaps outside of it, um, that this body can find as a matter of, of public policy are gaps worth, um, worth filling as you are fiscal stewards to, um, to the taxpayers of this community and, um, in your responsibilities, uh, fiscally and for, uh, legal accountability.
So the second part then, and I thank you, I, I believe this will help give us a better shield to protect the taxpayers and, and the dollars that we spend on their behalf. But the second part is, is there a precedent at all in the contractual process, vendor process, of some vendor saying, ah, I don't want to play that game. I'm gonna not worry about that. Are we gonna have limited or lesser choices to make for software, for playground equipment, for work gloves? Now, is there any precedent at all in that, where they don't want to play our game?
Well, I know that Public Works is, uh, has no shortage of, of companies eager to do business with, uh, with the political subdivisions and the state of Indiana.
Okay.
And they haven't, uh, as far as I know, turned their trucks around and headed, um, and, and refused to do business with the state.
Yeah.
It's possible. Um, I can't say, um, that it might not happen in, in other agreements.
But no precedent? You don't see any, you haven't seen any precedent?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mishler.
Thanks, and thanks, John. Uh, I am not in any shape or form a lawyer, so let me make sure that I understand this and, uh, can break it down when, when asked about it. Currently, if we have someone come in, like you said, and build a playground, and they use substandard equipment, and if someone gets hurt on that equipment, whoever gets hurt can turn around and sue the manufacturer, but the manufacturer can put their hands up and say, under our current contractual agreement, the city has to, uh, represent us, uh, pay if we're at a loss, things like that. Is that how it currently is?
You understood it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So, under the new ordinance, we would put it in that that is no longer possible. If you install substandard equipment, then you are therefore liable for any lawsuits that you are found to be liable for, or any judgments, I should say.
And, yes, we are saying that, that if that provision ends up in a contract, that it's unenforceable against the city.
And this is something we are already doing with Public Works and Public Works divisions around the state.
Yes, this, because of a state statute that has provided those protections.
Okay. Are there any other communities in Indiana that have done this for non-public work stuff yet?
I thought for sure I would find another community that has adopted, uh, an ordinance like I'm proposing, that is before you. I have not found one.
Okay. Uh, personally, I think this adds, um, some protection to the, to the taxpayers, and, um, hopefully it means we get more quality equipment installed if they could be found liable for it. So, thank you.
Mr. Holtz.
John, would it be our responsibility to inform them, or it's their responsibility to know that it's an ordinance that we have on the books?
I don't think we would purposefully deceive them, uh, but, but they are, as we all are, um, assumed to know the laws of, of the city and of the state. And maybe that's something of, of an illusion, uh, that everybody, I mean, I know many, many much smarter attorneys than I who don't know all the law, and we never do, nor do the judges, but we are expected to learn about it. And when we're writing it into our, and when we're writing provisions into our contract that seek to change the law, I think you have a responsibility to, to look locally at ordinances and, and determine whether or not they have changed.
Mr. Hinke.
Again, um, I just need some clarification and understanding. It sounds as though this is more to do with contractual law and what you can build into the contract, right? Really protecting both parties, if I would look at it that way, so it's more clearly defined. I don't understand by what measure, and I don't know if that is contract to contract, you would, you would alter it based on what you're, um, being contracted to do or what we are employing someone, uh, contractually for? Or is there a blanket standard measure verbiage that protects us?
Currently, um, we are having to do it contract by contract because it's appearing time and time and time again in the form of an indemnification provision or a limitation of liability provision. With the adoption of this ordinance, it becomes law in the city of Elkhart, not to enforce between business and business, or even the city, even individuals and business. It's simply, in doing business with the city of Elkhart, you may not include these types of provisions that alter Indiana law, uh, in the framework of a contract. You will, the law of negligence, the law of, of courts and the like will control whether, uh, the contracting party, uh, is or is not responsible for a loss.
So then, my question would be, since this is, as you said, filling the gaps from Indiana state law, number one, I would hope that the state would put up, fill in the gaps, uh, with interpretive language, so we're all under the same umbrella as a municipality. Um, but be that as it may, the question that I would have is, you know, some of these companies are outside of Indiana and international and all of those things. How do they then recognize Indiana law as the superior law based on where we're located as opposed to wherever they come from? How does that work?
Well, that would either fall to their legal counsel to know that these provisions are enforceable in the state, um, they learn about it in Public Works, um, and they're assumed to learn about it or to seek out, um, the legality of those provisions under local law. If they do not, um, more likely than not, when we get a contract to review and we see it, we're gonna push back and we're going to say, I'm sorry, we can't, you're gonna have to remove this provision. We have an ordinance that prohibits it. Um, and, and unless you can go before the council and persuade the council that it's in the public interest to, uh, waive the application of the ordinance, um, it, it simply cannot remain. Or if it does, it will be unenforceable.
So, so to make sure I get this, would you say then that it gives you more contractual leverage? Is it for the things that we do or the things that we hold them accountable?
I don't know that it gives us leverage, because I'm not seeking leverage. I just, I would be happy to see the city, um, be held to and, uh, and allowed to hold others to the same standards that the law prescribes, um, in, in the manufacture of, of playground equipment. So, it's, it's not that we get leverage, um, it's, it's simply that it rebalances the relationship.
So I'm, I'm, I'm thinking specifically about, um, police and fire radio equipment that was multiple, multiple, uh, millions of dollars, and Motorola sold their portion or the subcontractor sold its portion, but we never did get a, a complete, um, access to what was sold us, per se. So there's one. Um, I'm also looking at the issues that we've had at Public Works, where contractors, you know, created some damage, and the city, um, actually aided them in cleaning up the mess they made, um, for commonuteers and things of that nature that had brass parts go through. And looking at the airport that had, um, pavement done, where jets actually sank into the pavement because of the quality issues of that and was repaved. How does a city, um, get to hold somebody else responsible for a change?
Well, fortunately, when you're describing those Public Works, uh, contracts, the law already provides that if that was, um, if the construction work, um, on the, on the, on the, on the landing field was below the standards, uh, for that work, um, then, under negligence law, they would be responsible for any consequential damages, direct or indirect. It's, uh, but in other dealings with, say, software or, or equipment like you're describing, if, um, if it is foreseeable, um, that after a year, these, uh, you know, these, these radios are going to fail, and, um, and the manufacturer knew of those defects and continued to sell them at, um, you know, without regard to the consequences of that, uh, in the absence of a, um, well, in the absence of this ordinance, if a indemnification provision shows up in their contract and it gets through, um, through the, the legal department and we couldn't push back and it just came down to a policy decision, whether we accept it and, and, and ta, and run the risk of those radios failing and something terrible happening, um, then we're gonna end up eating that, uh, we're gonna end up being responsible for it. If, if, if they come after, not necessarily come after us, but go after the manufacturer, um, and with a contract provision that says you will indemnify and hold harmless the contractor against any claims that arise out of this contract that we have, that we, the, uh, equipment manufacturer, we have with the city, um, they're gonna, we're the ones that are gonna be paying the, um, the bill. So it's, it's that that I'm, um, recommending that, um, we prevent from happening. And, and that's the accountability piece, that it holds those manufacturers, um, responsible, um, for the failures of what they, um, are selling, not necessarily selling, but manufacturing, um, and if they know, and, and they felt in their stand, and their, the quality of their work or manufacturing processes fell below the acceptable standards of the industry.
Yeah, I, I would just hope that, and, and again, um, I trust you on this. I think it's a bit above everything. I don't do your type of work, obviously, um, but I would like to note that the city is protected in going back after contractors that then hired to come in at exorbitant prices to do work for the city, and should that fail, because all contracts should have some form of performance standard, that the city has the right to go back on that individual. And we just don't have a good history or track record in that area. So I'm hopeful that this will help us. Maybe I'm, it's wishful thinking on my part.
What you just described is exactly what this ordinance would address.
All right, I'm for it, then.
Thank you, John.
Thank you all.
Open up to the public, if there's anyone in public that would like to speak with regards to this ordinance. Seeing none, return back to council floor. Any further council discussion? Seeing none, Melody, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinke. President Dawson.
Aye.
Third and final.
And most from Mr. Hinke, second from Mr. Mishler, for third and final. Melody, would you read this by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed Ordinance 25-0-29. An ordinance of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, adopting the Elkhart Contractual Protections Ordinance to prohibit certain limitations of liability and indemnification clauses in contracts with the city. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinke. President Dawson.
Aye.
SS91.
Thank you. There are no ordinances, resolutions referred to committee. There are no tabled resolution in ordinances, new business, ordinance on first reading. Melody, would you read Proposed Ordinance 25-0-38 by title, please?
Proposed Ordinance 25-0-30. An ordinance request to repeal ordinance number 5746 and 5434, as amended and enacted a, enact a new wastewater utility use ordinance.
Thank you. If there are no objections, I'll pass this on a second reading. Would you read Proposed Ordinance 25-0-31?
Proposed Ordinance 25-0-31. An ordinance adopting the operating budget for the 2026 calendar year, appropriating funds for such purpose, and establishing the tax rate for the city of Elkhart.
Gonna assign this to the finance committee of the whole. Would you read Proposed Ordinance 25-0-32 by title, please?
Proposed Ordinance 25-0-32. An ordinance fixing the annual salaries of elected officials of the city of Elkhart, Indiana for the calendar year 2026.
Gonna assign this to the finance committee of the whole. Would you read Proposed Ordinance 25-0-33 by title, please?
Proposed Ordinance 25-0-33. An ordinance fixing the salaries and wages of appointed officers and other salaried employees of the city of Elkhart, Indiana for the calendar year 2026.
I'm gonna assign this to the finance committee of the whole. Would you read Proposed Ordinance 25-0-34 by title, please?
Proposed Ordinance 25-0-34. An ordinance adopting a schedule of salaries and other compensation for the police officers of the city of Elkhart, Indiana for the calendar year 2026.
Thank you. I'm gonna assign this to the finance committee of the whole. Would you read Proposed Ordinance 25-0-35 by title, please?
Proposed Ordinance 25-0-35. An ordinance adopting a schedule of salaries and other compensation for the fire department of the city of Elkhart. of the city of Elkhart, Indiana for the calendar year 2026.
Thank you. I'm gonna assign this to the finance committee of the whole. There are no resolutions, there are no vacation hearings, or reports of the mayor, border works, border safety department hits. A new business, there's only new business, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Michler.
Just a couple of things. First, I want to invite everyone to celebrate our nation's constitution and America's 250th birthday. Everyone is cordially invited to attend the 10th Annual Rethling Ceremony in Honor of Constitution Work, Sunday, September 21st at 2:00 p.m. on Island Park. This is put together by the ladies of the Grant Army of the Republic and William Tufts' chapter of the NSDAR. The other thing, real quick, I just want to thank our street department for what they've done on Second Street, converting it to two-way. It's gonna be a big change for all of us. I understand the, the reasoning behind it. It's better for residential development, commercial development, and pedestrian safety. One thing I would request, though, is maybe we can get why we did the conversion out to folks a little more. We did a great Facebook post praising the completion and everything like that, but there's still a lot of people who have reached out not sure why we did it. And if we're just able to get that word out on, on the benefits of the conversion to two-way downtown and why we went through that process, I think that would be beneficial. Thank you.
Mr. Hinky.
I, I used to call in quite a bit to 311, but seeing that, you know, two-plus years out, things haven't necessarily changed in the positive way. And that would be the, the routine cars on Prairie where the yard is completely dirt. There's five cars at various homes on Beardsley East Yard Parking. Just a chronic non-compliance and wondering why we can't seem to get a handle on it. The, the chronic houses are the chronic houses. I can see where it may take three up to six months to manage up, get them in court, get them in non-compliance, whatever the case may be. But after that, two years plus, you're just not gonna do it. And we're obviously not in charge of it because we're not enforcing it. It's still happening. I think it's very unfair to the neighbors of the area. It sets a lower standard than it should. People that pass by have to look at it, and I'm sure that's not a good standard to set either. But ultimately, it hits our assessed valuations and which in the future becomes a very critical issue for all of us. And that we have to push our city to a higher standard, at least meet the minimum standards that are already on the books. So, I'm not sure if there's a comprehensive plan that we should ask for, something that would say we're getting a handle on these chronic properties that don't seem to be pushed into compliance, fined into compliance, taken to court for compliance. Don't see it. Could use some help on that and maybe even a presentation to tell us why.
Mr. Fish.
Thank you. So, the, the Saturday passed. There was a meeting at the Railroad Museum regarding the Mohawk 3001. Hopefully, we're gonna have a report from Brent and the Fort Wayne Historical Railroad Group that's managing the transfer of that. It was attended by 40 people and some lively discussion was had. Second, if, if I could just have the street department clean up the intersection of Middlebury, Tyler, and the railroad at Main Street. The maintenance crew that just repaired that crossing right directly in front of the Railroad Museum left a lot of street rubble, gravel, et cetera, and we really need to get that cleaned up. Thank you.
Thank you. New business. Seeing none. Porch Mayor, Border Works, Border Safety, nothing, nothing from the mayor. Neighborhood Association reports? Any Neighborhood Association reports? Nothing. Mark that down. Brent didn't have a Neighborhood Association report? Privilege of the floor. Privilege of the floor.
My name is Ralph Spelbring. I live on Bank Street. There are two houses between where I live and Superior Street where the orange line runs. The orange line changed considerably last month. I rode it to find out how it was different. I'd like to suggest that maybe you on the council, maybe on the Saturday, ride the orange, green, and blue. They're within the city area. The red goes to Gosha and the yellow goes to Fisher-Walker. So, those are easier to understand than the ones that stay within the city or close to the city in Elkhart. The state of Michigan and the federal government changed their fiscal year from ending on June 30th to September 30th in 1976. That seems quite reasonable for the federal government as it got bigger. But the state of Michigan is a little iffy. They haven't settled their budget. They had kind of a agreement that they'd settle it by June 30th. This year, they're in September. They still haven't settled it. Texas has a fiscal year that ends on August 31st. New York on March 31st. I think all the other states have a fiscal year that end on June 30th. Senate Bill 1, that was supposed to address increased property taxes. All they needed to do, the homestead exemption is $48,000. All they needed to do was increase that to maybe $80,000, $100,000. Instead, they came up with this big, complex bill. Hopefully, they'll repeal it or do something because there's a lot of stuff in there that doesn't need to be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
Hi, my name's Sandra Collins.
Pull the mic down so you can, but there you go.
My name is Sandra Collins.
And sign in, there's a sign-in sheet right in front of you.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I live across from what they're calling the Triangle Park now. It's on Strong West. And it's actually a piece of land, and it's got nine trees on it, and it's beautiful. But the park, people think that they need to put benches and statue and flowers there. I don't mind the flowers, I don't mind the statue. But once you, once you put benches down, it's a gathering spot. Strong Avenue is not as good as it used to be. And we have elements down there. I watch it all day. I have a huge picture window facing the park. I was not told, nobody said anything, until I was at a meeting and they said, "We're gonna build this park." You know, "We're gonna use benches." Jamerson is the one that is in charge of the parks, and he said, "This is what we're doing." I feel like I'm being bullied. I had no idea this was gonna happen. I'm 78 years old and I'm widowed, and I, I'm just now beginning to feel safe. But now they're talking about putting the park benches. I'm opposed to the benches. I'm opposed to people gathering there. Bring their chairs, they can do that and everything. But we, I talked to a neighbor and two weeks ago, he was going to work at 3:00 in the morning and he saw five or six young, young teenagers. They were all in black and the black hoodies coming down South Strong. That's where we're getting our bad elements. They say that it's, it's probably by the Elkhart Clinic, those apartments. I see bikes that are being stolen. You know, they'll be riding and they'll be holding one. A lot of theft in, on Strong now. And, uh, let's see. They've, the city's always taken care of it, but now it seems that the association has taken over. They say that the women on the, the garden masters will take care of the flowers. I don't know how long they would do that. But now I don't even notice that the city is mowing. It seems like they have two people that they've hired off, you know? And this is a walk-through park for the kids coming home from school, from West Side and from the junior, or grade school. I mean, there's a lot of kids. And what would be sitting on those benches? I don't know. But, I mean, we're getting some bad elements there. And I don't wanna look out my window and see these people laying on the benches. I'm, I'm getting scared. And they didn't tell me in any way. And maybe that's their policy, I don't know.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
And I would ask, one of our councilmen will probably get with you after the meeting, I'm pretty sure.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is anyone else in the audience?
Somebody else.
Did you take the pen? Hi, my name is Marlon Miller, and I live on 1311 Gilbert Street, which is just one block north of Strong. Sandy, particularly the one that just came up here previously, she actually went around the neighborhood and actually got signatures for people that are in agreeance with her. Particularly for her house, which is on that corner, what she's talking about, her view. One of the benches, like, obviously, there's the park and can be viewed from different angles or different approaches people can come to. But one of the places they're proposing a bench specifically is like, it's just her house and it's just directly in front of her house. There's not like houses that are like super close on the left and then it's just the street. I think the thing that's most concerning is like putting that one specific one right in front of Sandy's place. Because then it's just people that could be looking at her residence. Like you said, she's got big open windows and she's like the only one there. But yeah, obviously, we're places where people can sit. People are gonna sit, people are gonna look for places to sleep. Elkhart's very good at taking care of their homeless people in terms of having housing. Doesn't mean people always use it. But, I mean, warmer months, people, you know, choose as they may be. But that's like one of the concerns would be. I have specifically, it's just the one for Sandy. I mean, if they wanna do a park bench or make a happy medium, that's fine. Maybe not one specifically or one isolated house. So, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is anyone else in the audience? Seeing none. Gonna close the public hearing, return to the council floor. Scheduling of committee meetings. We have a finance committee meeting Saturday, 9:00. I'm not sure of the schedule. Mayor, Megan, could you make, maybe get us a schedule of when the department hits are coming or are they, so we have an idea of?
I, I can provide that to you.
Okay.
I got it today, so.
All right.
Having breakfast?
And lunch?
Breakfast and lunch, yes.
Mr. Michler.
Uh, yes, I've been asked to hold a committee meeting of the Health and Public Safety Committee next Monday at 6:00 p.m. where we will be discussing a potential battery storage facility in the city of Elkhart. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other scheduling of committee meetings? Seeing none. Motion to accept communications.
So move.
Gonna move from Crabtree, second by Mr. Fish. Do we accept communications? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to adjourn.
So move.
Crabtree, second by Mr. Fish. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Arrived.